Welcome to A C E. Today we have to discuss target S S C, C G L and C H S L pure maths session twelve, okay? Question number one. The tangents drawn at A and B on the circumference of the circle intersect at a point P. Two tangents are drawn whenever so the both two tangents are drawn from the circumference. When do tangents gonna draw chase the what is the condition we know? So V is the center, so then. A and B from A and B, two tangents are drawn, both are intersecting at a point P. If angle A P B equal to how much thirty degrees, then find angle P A B. What is P A B? So this angle is asking, right? Now, so if two tangents are drawn from an exterior point, both tangents are always equal. When do tangents allowed type equal count type P A equal to P B means here. P A B is a which triangle, P A B is a an isosceles triangle. So in an isosceles triangle, the respective angles are equal, respective angles allow time equal. Remember theta on it, it could and to the day. Theta and day, so theta means one eighty minus theta, one eighty minus thirty means one fifty. One fifty means share equally, so each part is how much each angle is how much seventy five degrees. So what is angle P A B seventy five degrees? So option D is the right answer, okay? Next one. The breadth of a rectangular hall is three fourths of its length. Length and breadth, so what happens? The breadth of the rectangular floor is three fourths of its length. So length X means breadth is how much three fourths, three by four X, right? If the area of the floor is one ninety two, what is the area formula? Area is L into B, that is one ninety two is given, length is how much? X into three by four X, three ones, three six, eighteen, three fourths, twelve. So X square equal to sixty four into four means X equal to how much eight to sixteen. So X equal to sixteen means what is the length is sixteen means breadth is how much? So three fourths means how much twelve? So length is sixteen, breadth is how much twelve? Then what is asking, what is the difference between the length and breadth? What is L minus B? That is sixteen minus twelve is how much four? So what is the answer? Four is the right answer, so option C is the right answer, okay? Right, then next one. So two iron spears of diameter means the radius how much? What is the radius? Three are is immersed into a water contained, water contained in a cylindrical vessel of radius six centimeters. If the level of water in the vessel will be raised by. A cylindrical vessel and then ta. So what is the radius of the cylindrical vessel? The radius of the cylindrical vessel is six centimeters, R equal to how much? Six centimeters. So elanti cylindrical vessel low in this cylindrical vessel, some water is there. What the water and then some water is poured, they love water and then ta. So in this, what they did, two iron balls, two iron spears wayser whose radius is how much? Three whose radius is how much? Three centimeters radius to run a rain of balls and then visa. Automatically what happens? So the level of water will increase or not. So water level and it could chit and can increase out the day. Then what level it increases or level length increase in the and all of that, right? So simple, yanta volume of spears lot of luck well, that you and the water and it by crisis, how to the lead? And what is the condition? Volume of two spears is equal to volume of water rise. How now? So water and arise in the spear, your two volumes spear could and they own to the. What is the volume of the spear? Fourth pi R cube, what is the spear? Three, three into three into three like that, how many spears are there? Two spears are there. E is equal to, E is equal to volume of water rise, volume is in which shape? Water is shaped on the cylindrical shape on the cylindrical volume into what is the volume of the cylinder? Pi R square, what is the radius? Six into six into height, what is the height that X only we have to find. So what is the X? I didn't find out she allow now, so pi, pi cancel. So right, one three, one three cancel. So three ones, three twos, ones, twos, four, four cancel. So finally, what we are getting X equal to how much two? So how much it increases? Two centimeters it increases, okay? Right, then next one. The total surface area of a metallic hemisphere is eighteen forty eight. What is the condition given? Total surface area of hemisphere, what is the total surface of hemisphere? Three pi R square is given how much eighteen forty eight? Even if R find out, three into twenty two by seven into R square equal to how much? Eighteen forty eight. So now cancel eleven ones, eleven twos, eleven ones. Sorry, and then eleven two, eleven eighteen forty eight. Eleven ones, eleven means how much here? Seven, seven means eleven six, eleven eights, right? Now again, right here, six, oh, one minute. One minute, one minute. What is given just see three into, three into twenty two by seven into R square. Three pi R square equal to eighteen forty eight, get the eighteen forty eight. So eighteen forty eight, now we have to cancel. So eleven, eleven twos, twenty two, eleven ones, eleven, eleven means in the seven on the eleven six, sixty six, eleven six, sixty six. So eleven eights, right? So you put do cancel gel six dot cancel gel six ones, six, six twos, twelve, four, six eights, forty eight. So R square equal to him, which is the twenty eight into seven and day. R equal to how much fourteen, R and those the fourteen. So R fourteen, which is the, if we don't accept now do. The hemisphere is melted into a cylindrical, sorry, into a circular cone. So hemisphere in the end look and watch this or cone look and watch this or. If a shape is converted into another shape, what is constant? Volumes constant and if the radius of the base of the cone is same as the radius of the hemisphere. Then its height is, that means hemisphere radius and cone radius both are same. When do you allow night a same down and then. So what is the condition? Volume of hemisphere is equal to volume of cone such that the radiuses are same, right? What is the volume of hemisphere? Two third pi R cube equal to what is the volume of a cone? One third pi R square H here, both radius are same and the R ask on a. So two hours, two hours cancel, pi, pi cancel, three, three cancel. So finally, what we are getting H equal to two R, but R already we know what is the radius? Radius is how much fourteen? So what is the height? Height is how much twenty eight centimeters? So option C is the right answer, okay? Right, then next one. In the trapezium A B C D. See, in the trapezium A B C D, angle B A is thirty, angle C D F is forty, B C is six and A B is twelve. A B, A B is twelve, find the area of the trapezium. What is the area of the trapezium? Area of the trapezium is half H into A plus B, right? So that is half into, so A one value we know, this is how much six plus. You put a height find out, we have to find a height as well as base, right? E part is six, E part could and to the six. Here it is, we are observing which triangle, right angle triangle with six thirty degrees. What is thirty degrees combination? One root three, two, so two parts is how much twelve? So one part is how much six and it and to the six out the day. So two root three parts and then the six root three. Why did the six say it, it could and to the six. Forty five degrees low, opposite and adjacent both are same, so it could and out in the six out. And day, now we are getting height, what is the height we are getting? Six and B, what is B? B must have entered the total B, six plus six, twelve plus six root three. Twelve plus six root three and day, twelve plus six root three, so that's it. So that is the area of the trapezium, two ones, two threes, that is three into. What we can eighteen plus six root three? So inka, inka, my the H six comma, they say six comma, they say eighteen into three plus root three. So eighteen into three plus root three is the right answer, so option A is the right answer, okay? So I can't manage to one side, one angle, manage to bring a right angle triangle, tell us that. Remaining all sides easily we can find, easy come and find out, okay? See, P Q R S is a parallelogram. P X and Q Y are respectively the perpendiculars of P Q and P and Q to S R and S R produced. Then P X equal to very clearly, we are observing both are heights. In a parallelogram, the heights are always same, so P X equal to them, which is the Q Y direct answer. So what is answer Q Y? So P X equal to Q Y is the right answer. In a parallelogram, the heights are always same, you put a heights allow on time, same okay allow on time, okay? Then next one. So in a right angle triangle A B C, oh, it is a right angle triangle, so just chonda, need to add them. So in a right angle triangle A B C, right angle that see, get a. In a right angle triangle A B C, right angle that see, A B C is a right angle triangle. C D is perpendicular to hypotenuse, C D is perpendicular to hypotenuse. Perpendicular to hypotenuse and a five points, one discuss as some five points in the theorem, right? So then, what in that B C value is given fifteen, A C value is given twenty, what is the triplet code? Fifteen, twenty, twenty five, so this is twenty five. Then find the value of C D, five points low, fourth point, a minute, Kuntam. The product of perpendiculars are always same and it's Kuntama and it and then what to the? A C into B C and to the A C into B C is always equal to A B into C D and it's Kuntam. The product of perpendiculars are always equal and it's Kuntam. Total five points, one discuss as the out of which this is the fourth point. So A C into B C equal to A B into C D, that is A C is how much? Twenty into fifteen equal to twenty five into C D, five fives, threes, five ones, five fours. So C D equal how much twelve? So what is the answer? Twelve is the right answer, so option B is the right answer, okay? Right, then next one. P Q R. P Q R, P Q R is a triangle whose area is how much? One eighty degrees, one eighty centimeter square. S is a point on a side Q R such that P S is the angular bisector of Q P R. The angular bisector and a word when upon and then day. Immediately we have to remember the angular bisector theorem, P Q R. So such that P S is the angular bisector, angular bisector. So angular bisector and a word when upon and then day, what is angular bisector theorem is telling? So angular bisector, P, a great, P Q, P Q by P R equal to, P Q by P R equal to S Q by S R. Or S Q by S R, la, angular bisector, la, la. So this is the theorem we will discuss, right? So what is angular bisector theorem? P Q by P R equal to S Q by S R. This is angular bisector theorem, how now? It the P Q by P R given how much two is to three, P Q by P R is how much? Q is to three, P Q by P R, two is to three and day, S Q by S R could and to the ratio on to the. Two is to three, ratio on and on to the. It the then, what is the area of P S R? P S R and the car, are a in adjacent triangles are in the, if adjacent triangles are in the ratio of two is to three. Areas are also in the ratio of two is to three. Adjacent triangles, two is to three ratio on the areas could a two is to three ratio on time. Total area is given one fifty and day, total area and the one eighty. And day, total how many parts? Five parts is how much? One eighty, five parts, one eighty means one part is how much thirty six? So one part is thirty six, how many parts we want? P S R, P S R means how many parts we want? Three parts we want, so three parts is how much? One zero eight, so what is the area of P S R? So P S R is how much? One zero eight, it any parts and then the one hundred eight parts and then the, how now? Right, then, so you can angular bisector theorem and adjacent triangles concept, you render needs to call it, okay now? Then question number nine, ninth question C. Secant theta equal to X plus one by four X. Then find the value of secant theta plus tan theta. Anytime it is given like this, so this question we have to solve by using Pythagoras theorem, how now? So the in low could a variable on the variable line and X and it on Kunta, X equal to two and on Kuna. X I am taking it as a to anything we can take, either this cost, sir, now to two hundred thirty seven, this is, yes, you can take any number you can take, no problem. Right, so secant theta equal to, you must think two plus one by eight means how much? Sixteen means seventeen by eight, pretty easy to reach, get a man. So I am writing secant theta, secant theta. So what is secant? Hypotenuse by adjacent, what is the combination? Eight, fifteen, seventeen is the combination. Now substitute here, secant theta, what is secant theta? Seventeen by eight plus, what is tan theta? Tan theta means opposite wages and that is fifteen by, that is thirty two by eight means how much? Four, so we are getting answer is four, so check. So by substituting X equal to two, which answer is four, that is the right answer, four, Raval. So two X, two twos, four, right? So option B is the right answer, so what is the answer? Two X is the right answer, okay? Right, then see. Five, five sine seventy five, five sine seventy five, sine seventy seven plus two cos thirteen, cos fifteen by. Cos fifteen, sine seventy seven minus seven, sine eighty one by cos nine. Are a, cos nine, how we can write, sine eighty one, write shake, get a. So if the sum is ninety, sine and cos both are same or not? So what happens? Sin and cos both are same, so sine eighty one, sine eighty one cancel. And here, cos fifteen is there, so right, cos fifteen and seventeen, right? Cos, how we can write sine seventy five, sine seventy five, allow I, you, cos fifteen and write. Alaga, so see here, I can't, sine seventy seven on the. So cos thirteen, allow I, you, how we can write sine seventy seven and write. And day, what we are observing? Five sine seventy seven, cos fifteen, two sine seventy seven, cos fifteen, the two same and day, on the. Seven, I can't, maybe, the seven, cos fifteen, sine seventy seven by cos fifteen, sine seventy seven. Minus, I can't, on the seven, iti, iti cancel, so seven minus seven is how much? Zero, so what is the answer? Option B is the right answer, simple adjustment, I'm talking, this question like me, let it, okay now? Right, then next one. See, square root of, square root of one plus sine theta, one plus sine theta by one minus sine theta. Square root of one by, one plus sine theta by one minus sine theta plus square root of one minus sine theta by one plus sine theta. So that value is equal to, iti, and that equal out the day, and all of that, right? So now, simple, so in two methods we can go, so theta ni assume just Kunti, well, Pore. One thing is, you assume with the theta value, theta ni assume just Kunti. But here, theta ni assume just a zero degrees. So if you go with zero degrees, problem, problem will come, in the co caught and then the infinite out the day. Ninety degrees this Kunti, so if you go with sine, secant ninety, secant ninety, ite, so I can't, a problem was the. So manaki, secant ninety, what is secant ninety undefinable? So zero ninety, one gradu, forty five degrees this Kunti, so two cos theta, two sine theta, rendi equal, I put a. So what we have to go, we have to go with theta equal to sixty degrees or thirty degrees, Kvala. So elanti cases low, automarch, Kuntam. Instead of going that, simply go with a right angle triangle, a right angle triangle, these Kuntu, problem chase the very easy. Not only theta, theta na mahtarama, Kado, even we can go, we can assume a right angle triangle and could a chapter. Now we are substitute very simple, that is square root of one plus, what is sine, sine and then the opposite by adjacent, that is three. So opposite by hypo, that is one by three by five plus one minus three by five. But simple, similarly, one minus three by five by one plus three by five, you must know, Chorande, I can't. So eight by five, square root of eight by, I can't, two, how now? So two plus, similarly, this is two by eight and then the, so two ones, two fours, ones, fours and day. Two plus one by two and then the, so two plus one by two, that is five by two, five by two. So now checking your option, which answer is five by two, that is the right answer. Five by four and then the hypotenuse by adjacent, what is hypotenuse by adjacent? Secant theta, so secant. Secant theta is, secant theta is five by four and day. What is two secant theta, two secant theta is how much? Five by two, so what is the answer? Two secant theta is the right answer, so option D is the right answer. Our cross multiply just now could a stand the, so anyway we will get. So theta ni, here, Kanga, could a assume, change, theta na mahtarama, Kado, even we can go with the three, four, five and could a change, too. Okay, so illa could a change and chapter, actually, simple one, just a cross multiply just the, just the, cross multiply just the, we'll get. Even though, we're allow, till he could a, Kada, theta na mahtarama, assume, change, and Pala, led to. Even we can go with a any right angle triangle combination, a triplet code, totally, I manage to, okay now? Right, so that, of course, I'm, discuss, Chiron, Kose, I can't, I point and then the matter, I don't know. Question number twelve. Find the value of, see, sine square, sorry, sine X. Sin X minus two sine cube X by two cos cube by X minus cos X. So if you take sine X common, what will come here? One minus two sine square X by, here what will come? Cos X of two cos square X minus one. What is sine square X, one minus two sine square X? Cos two X, iti could and the, cos two X. So both are, what happens? Cancel, so sine X by cos X is how much? Tan X, so what is the answer? Tan X is the right answer, okay? Right, then next one. I'll see, if A plus one by A plus one equal to zero, where now A not equal to zero, what is A cube minus one? A plus one by A equal to minus one. A cube minus one by A equal to minus one means what is A cube? A cube equal to one and Jata. If A plus one by A equal to minus one, what is A cube? A cube equal to one and also A equal to omega and omega square and could a, Kuntam. So these are the conditions, one, a, X plus one, where, so if A plus one by A equal to minus one, what is A cube? One or A equal to omega, omega square. So if you substitute here, what will happen? A common, this, I can't, what's the, A cube minus one, what's the, A of, what is A cube? One, Kada, so one minus one, that is how much? Zero, so what is the answer? Option A is the right answer, okay? Right, then next one. If A by three equal to B by two, then find the value of two A plus three B by three A minus two. Very simple, anytime it is given like this, simply in place of A substitute three, in place of B substitute two. Substitute in the, all, and day, two into three plus three into two by three into, three into three minus two into two. That is six plus six, twelve by nine minus four, nine minus four is five, that is answer is how much? Twelve by five is the right answer, so option A is the right answer, very simple question, okay? Right, then next one. See, we, the value of the expression, the value of the expression. A minus B whole square by B minus C into C minus A plus B minus C whole square by. A minus B into B, C minus A plus C minus A whole square by A minus B into B minus A. Okay, so whenever it is given like that, algebraic expression, you put a, Kanna, Panna, simply assume the values, values ni assume, change. Any value, I am taking A equal to one, B equal to two, C equal to three and assume just Kuna. So substitute the values, A minus B, what is A minus B? Minus one, minus one whole square, one by B minus C minus one into C minus A two. Plus B minus C minus one whole square, one by A minus B minus one into C minus A two, right? Plus C minus A whole square, C minus mean two, two square is four by A minus B minus one into B minus C minus one. Hi, Pendi, so this is minus one by two, minus one by two plus four, that is how much? Three, so what is the answer? Three is the right answer, so option B is the right answer, simply any values you can say, I assume, A, then I assume, change. But one thing, question undefined, Kaka, Kudu, options undefined, Kaka, Kudu, options unique, Kunda. The three points, every session, I don't know, it's very, very important, okay? Question number sixteen. If X equal to A square plus B square and Y equal to two root A B, then find the value of A power four plus B power four by A square minus. Root two A B plus B square, iti find out. So again, it's a algebraic equation, Kada, assume A and B value. A B value ni assume just, and only A ni zero, B ni two and assume just, Kuna. So zero, two, and assume just Kunti, options low could a, I can't, a problem, Rado, Chorande, so problem, Chorande. X equal to, chase the, what is X? So X is four and Y equal to zero, X equal to zero, Y equal to zero and day, X Y zero. So Chodam, so zero, A zero, B two, so A zero, B two, substitute chase the, what's the? Zero plus, I can't, the two power four by zero, 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 two square and day, cancel A, you must the, two square, four, which is the. Answer is how much? Four we are getting, now check in your option, which answer is four, that is the right answer, simple, four, you must know, Chorande. So X Y low substitute, Chal, and day, zero plus four, zero minus four, so, so this is the answer, it and the zero, La, Utae. So what is the answer we are getting? So A is the right answer, so X plus Y is the right answer. Question number seventeen. The angle of elevation of a top of a tower from two points A and B, lying on a horizontal, horizontal. From the foot of the tower are respectively fifteen degrees and thirty degrees. If A and B are on the same side of the tower and A B equal to forty eight, what is the height of the tower? See, even had, one tower is there, so two places, two first point, and Chanta, angle, that observe, Jason, he observe with fifteen degrees. And from second, he is observing how much thirty degrees, illa, observe, chase the. So from A and B, the A B is how much? Forty eight, Ite, what is the height of the tower? The tower height, you must, the, and all of that, right? Fifteen degrees, thirty degrees combination, fifteen and thirty degrees combination, you know, Kuntam. One root three, one root three, this is two plus root three and two. They can fifteen and thirty degrees combination, and day, manage to, parts, so two parts, tell us, the, forty eight. And one part is how much? Twenty four, how many parts we want? Any parts, Kavol, manage to height and day, what a part, they Kaval, so what is the height? Height is how much? Twenty four, very simple, so option B is the right answer, okay? So fifteen degrees, thirty degrees combination, one on each, Kuntam, right? So two parts, forty eight, and tell someone, how many parts we want to find? One part we have to find, so one part is how much? Twenty four, how now? Question number eighteen. How many times are there in the geometric progression? Five, twenty, eighty, three, twenty and so on, two, zero, four, eight, zero. So what are the values? Five, twenty, eighty, three, twenty and so on, two, zero, four, eight, zero. So it is in which progression? Geometric progression, on a geometric progression, on the, so what is A here? Five, what is R here? Four and T N is how much? Last term is how much? Two, zero, four, eight, zero. So in geometric progression, what is T N? T N is A into R power N minus one, so what is T N? Two, zero, four, eight, zero equal to five into four power N minus one, so five ones, five fours. Zero, four, nines and six, so four power N minus one equal to how much? Four, zero, nine, six, and then they, Nella, I, you, sixty four into sixty four and day, four cube into four cube and day, what to the? Four power N minus one equal to four power six and day, N equal to how much? Seven, so what is the value of N? N equal to how much? Seven, any times, and day, seven times, and day, okay? Right, then next one. Find the value of the expression, one minus six plus two minus seven plus three minus eight and so on, hundred times. This need to separate, Kedar, ask, no, one, two, three, order, and the, Allah, Adam, Chorande, one plus two plus three and so on, how many times? Fifty times, I can't, any times? Fifty times, alaga, minus, Malia, Kana, start, with the six, seven, eight, six plus seven plus eight and so on, how many times? Fifty times, Matthi, Nid, Utae, fifty times, fifty times, a hundred times, Utae, right? So some, the sum of first N times, formula, N into N plus one by twenty, fifty into fifty plus one by two minus, I can't. So sum of N times formula, N by two into, and day, fifty by two into, sum of N times formula is. N by two into two A plus N minus one into D, right? So that is fifty by two into N, so two into A, six plus N minus one and day, forty nine into D, what is D? One, right? So once, twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, Kama, this, I can't, must the, twenty five, if you take Kama, here, fifty one, minus, I can't. Forty nine plus twelve, that is one, fifty, sixty one, right? So until the, twenty five into minus ten means how much? Minus two hundred fifty, so what is the answer we are getting? Minus two fifty is the right answer, so option A is the right answer. Then question number twenty. X plus, X equal to three plus two root two, then find the value of root X minus one by root X. Root X minus one by root X, what is the value of root X? Root X, what to the? Three plus two root two square root, what to the? So already two on the, so multiple chase the, two, Raval, add chase the, three, Raval, and day, two, once, two, two plus one, and the, three. So how to write square root? Root two plus one square root is one, so what is root X value? Root two plus one, so root two plus one minus one by root two plus one and day, what to the? Root two plus one plus becomes minus, out the day, so root two minus one, difference, one, now, on the, Kava, to kind of denominator, Royal, simple, Lido. So root two, root two cancel, so one plus one is how much? Two, so option B is the right answer, okay? So by this, completed this session, so in next session, with some more questions, we will discuss, right? Thank you. Thank you.